I call the regular meeting of the City of Aransas Pass, July 17th at 6:00 PM to order this rise, the invocation.
Dear Lord, we thank you for this evening, we thank you for the blessings that you bestowed upon us, my Father. We ask my Father that you be with the families that have lost loved ones, especially the Marines that were lost, my Father, that passed away, my Father, serving their country, be with the families and their loved ones, my Father. I ask that you guide us, the city council, to make the right decisions for our city, as we ask in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, now we go to a presentation given by Richard Gonzalez on the Science and Spanish Club Network.
Thank you, City Council, Richard Gonzalez, PO Box 1057, Aransas Pass. The Science Spanish Club Network has been operating in Aransas Pass for seventeen years now, and I have a resolution that I presented to the city manager on World Seagrass Day, which is the first Friday in April. The resolution is from State Representative Jeanne Morrison out of Victoria, who passed the Texas Conservation, Seagrass Conservation Bill in 2013. She was our Parade Marshal that year. I'm not going to read the resolution, but I am going to appeal to the city council that we begin looking at setting the process for getting ourselves proclaimed the seagrass capital of the world. Seventy-five percent of our city limits is on the water, and that's primarily Redfish Bay, state scientific study area. So we have a lot of support and rationale for doing this. So I'm going to ask the city council to explore that process so that we can get it done. About ten years ago, we've been doing the Lighthouse Lakes Adopt a Beach for seventeen years now, and about ten years ago, when somebody called us to ask for directions to the Lighthouse Lakes Trail Park, I said, "Well, you know the road to the ferry?" And as soon as I said that, I'm going like, how unromantic can that be to describe the road to the ferry? Copano Bay Causeway, Oasis Bay Causeway. So we set into motion the process of meeting with all the counties, San Patricio, Oasis, and Aransas, TexDOT, to rename the road to the ferry Redfish Bay Causeway. And we're kind of like seventy-five percent there. We still don't have the official signage on the road that says Redfish Bay Causeway, so we have a little bit more homework to do, and I'm going to appeal to the city council that we begin exploring how to finish that out. Thirdly, I'm going to, I talked to one of the city councilmen about looking at some hot funds for the Science and Spanish Club Network to pursue bringing the World Seagrass Association Biannual Conference to Aransas Pass sometime over the next six years. It's going to take a while, they meet every two years, but these are the, but these are world-class, global academic researchers who study seagrass all over the planet. Right now, there is a, they are primarily dominated by the northern and southern latitudes, so by bringing the conference to Aransas Pass, we have the Heart Research Institute, and we have UTMSI on our wings to bring this here, to give it legitimacy, to attract the attention, to connect the northern and southern latitudes and connect them with researchers who are doing seagrass research in the semitropic zone. So it's a good thing that would happen if they, if they came to Aransas Pass. So I'm exploring what it's going to take to do that. That's, again, more homework to do. Thirdly, fourthly, I want to also expand the Adopt a Beach program to go beyond the Lighthouse Lakes. The southern end of Redfish Bay Causeway is absolutely, it's an illegal dumping ground, but Harbor Island Road is atrocious. It is absolutely atrocious. It is getting worse and worse after every single weekend, so we need to now include Harbor Island Road with our Adopt a Beach cleanup. I mean, you can go out there now or tomorrow, and you're going to see all kinds of weird trash out there. People, and I don't know what the permitting process is over there, but if, I think if you consider, you know, it's like in Port A, if you stop in your car, you've got to have a permit to be able to stop, and we need to look at some kind of guideline because that behavior has to be corrected. There are trash cans out there in some of those little cubby holes, but that's not enough. That's not enough. It's not. We need signage. I've already talked to Senior Chief Fish at the middle school to look at maybe having the LOC program make us little signs so we can put little reminders up there for people at each one of the cubby holes. So there are things we can begin looking at doing that hopefully will change that behavior. And all of this dumps into the shallow waters and affects our seagrass meadows. So, thank you, and then there's the last note on, you have the handout. Part of what the Science Spanish Club Network is all about is we teach children based on shared ecosystems. We know that young people can learn based upon what they have in common and what they have in difference, and when they get together, they can talk, and we can use science to be able to bring them together. And that's what we're doing on this Saturday. There's a flyer there for you, it's a Takeria, a play on words. We're bringing Mayor Gomez and Mayor Lamas together to look at how we can begin a dialogue of how the two cities can work together on a grander scale and looking at ourselves as an e, a shared ecosystem rather than two separate municipalities too busy to talk to each other. Thank you.
Employee recognition presented by the police chief.
Yes, Mayor and Council, thank you. This employer, employee, I don't think fully knows why she's here today, but her name is Jessica Dougherty, and she started with the city back in April 11, 2016. She works with our animal control services, and she was recommended for recognition, and I strongly agree. Let me share some of her achievements. We are live streaming this too, because we just feel it's so important to get the word out. Okay, she made the shelter a proud place for visitors to tour. She's very astute with the animal control laws and progressive practices. She's hailed several adoption and microchip clinics. She's established and maintained various relationships with ancillary services to help find good homes for these animals. We are not, like people say, a kill shelter. A lot of communities look at control that way. We do our very best to try to rehome the animals that we recovered. She's secured outside funding sources to help minimize budgetary impact, has authored and distributed public educational materials, goes above and beyond to help citizens with their pet needs. For example, she helped an elderly lady build an enclosure for her cats while off duty and on her own time. She's paid for a gift basket with her own money and then sold raffle tickets to help raise money for Port Aransas Animal Friends, a nonprofit organization that works very closely with, with our shelter. And she's completed, this is new, and this was totally new to me, I've never heard of this program, it's awesome, completed the Red Rover Reading Program, and now reads to groups of children. The Red Rover Readers Program helps children explore positive relationships between people and animals through stories and discussions. How awesome is that? Where have you heard of something like that? Thank you for that. Her dedication and tireless work has saved countless lives within our furry friend animal population. And Captain Lynn Pierce, who closely monitors animal control services, if you want to come up, sir? And we'll bring both of our animal control ladies up, so you can see both of them, come on. As we recognize Jessica. Come around here. Isn't this wonderful? I want to tell you how much this lady cares about her animals. At our last adoption event, the Smith Reedy, as the animals were being adopted, she cried. She puts her whole heart into our program, and it's made it into what it should have always been. Thank you, Jessica. And Mr. Han, if you recall, we introduced her, what, a month or so ago? She makes killer gumbo. So between taking care of our furry friends, killer food, we've got a great set. And no, the animals are not used in the gumbo.
Okay, now we go to the consent agenda, agenda. All of the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member's so request. If discussion is desired, that, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately.
I'll make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now we go to public hearing, Alan.
Thank you, Mayor. We have, I think, six public hearings tonight. The first is a request for conditional use permit for Aransas Pass Brewing LLC to operate a brew pub at 130 East Goodnight Avenue. The Planning and Zoning Committee has previously met on this and has approved it, subject to certain conditions, which I think you should have copies of in your packet. Is there someone with Aransas Pass brewing here tonight? Yes, ma'am.
I'm Catherine Foley. I live at 108 May Court, and I've owned property in Aransas Pass for seven years and have lived here for about six and a half. We were, a group of us were looking around, trying to think of how we can create an atmosphere where people are not just passing through town. And as we looked around, we realized there was no brewery in Aransas Pass. In fact, there's no brewery in Rockport. So, as we are brilliant, we came up with the idea of doing this and started looking for property. Just this last week, I completed the purchase of 130 Goodnight, and then all the property around the back of it, the lots, and the side of it. So 130 and 144 Goodnight. So our goal is to create a beautiful, small, mini brewery, and to the side of it would be a pub. And since it's an old firehouse and jail, we're looking at calling it Hook and Ladder Brew House and Hook and Ladder Pub. We're looking at having a jailhouse beer garden outside. We have parking all the way through the back. In fact, we have nearly, well, more than 7,000 square feet of parking. So we truly believe this would be something that would benefit Aransas Pass and the residents. We would, well, we're looking at all the different things we can do with the building. We'll essentially gut the whole inside and just in half it. The east half, or the west half will be the brewery, and then the east half will be the pub. Do you have any questions for me?
I have a question.
Sure.
About how many seats will you have in there?
We're looking at right now about seventy-five to maximum of a hundred, would be under a hundred, I'm sure.
And parking is?
Well, we have 7,000 square feet, and that was one of the things when I went to, and talked with Kat about, maybe if you want to address that.
This property is located in the Central Area Zoning District, and the, as it's designated for downtown, it has a very unrestricted parking requirements. It doesn't require a lot. The property that they've obtained and designated for parking more than exceeds the requirement and will more than meet what their, what we project as far as their, their business will require. It was in addition, I, I know you, you'll see the, we added a provision similar to the conditional use permit from last month. It was in response, HEB's Representative Mary Rohr called and said HEB is very much in support of any business. They were concerned because the parking lot in Aransas Pass for HEB does tend to get used for other businesses, and so we suggested just that I, one, I let them know that the property owners have made sure that they're going to have more than enough parking, but just as an added protection and added courtesy to HEB to include a provision in the conditional use permit that would require that they accommodate their customers' parking.
And more than happy. And our main entrance will be at the side. It'll be on the arch street side, so it will not be in front.
Yeah, that's easier, easier access.
And Ms. Foley, you are familiar with the conditions that the Planning and Zoning has set forth?
Ashley, I have not received a copy.
Oh, you have not?
No.
Well, let's go over them. This is, this is pretty standard. First condition is that the conditional use permit shall be subject to review every twelve months and is non-transferable. That means that you can't transfer it to someone else. Cannot be used for any other purpose than what the conditional use permit is issued for. The hours of operation shall be from 11:00 AM to 12:00 AM, Monday through Sunday. The premises will be maintained in a clean and neat condition. That you will provide your own security guards and have them on the premises at all times. However, the bartender may act as, as the security guard. No problems within a twelve-month period. And those, that primarily means any kind of criminal act, disorderly conduct, those type of things.
I'll keep myself under control.
You look pretty questionable. All renovations to be made shall be permitted through the city building department and shall conform to currently adopted building mechanical and electrical codes. That you will provide adequate parking for your business and monitor the parking to ensure that customers of the brew pub do not use off-site private property for parking.
Yes.
You okay with those?
Absolutely, absolutely, no problem. Now, it will take about those twelve months for us to get our permitting.
Well, there's also the, the ordinance which the council will at some point act on, if we get to that point. Provides that, that the conditional use permit does not become effective until you have received a certificate of occupancy.
Okay.
So, until you get through, until you're ready to open your doors, it doesn't become effective.
Okay, I didn't, yeah, okay.
Okay.
Yep, that's fine.
Members of the council have any other questions? Anyone in the audience have any questions or comments? Yes, ma'am?
I just want to let the council know that we did send out all the required public notices, and all we have received in return has been positive feedback. We've received three letters of support and one phone call of support from the property owners within the 200-foot buffer zone.
If there's nothing further, I declare the public hearing closed.
Would, would be the favor of the council?
I'll make a motion, we approve the request for conditional use permit for Aransas Pass Brewing LLC to operate a brew pub at 130 East Goodnight Avenue.
With the stated conditions.
With the stated conditions.
I would second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Ms. Foley.
Yay, that's awesome, yeah, that's cool. A new, exciting business.
All right, the next public hearing is concerning the proposed ordinance amendment to add a provision to City of Aransas Pass code ordinances that will allow for and regulate banner signs. Captain?
Our current sign ordinance, currently it prohibits banner signs, but as I'm sure you've noticed, we still have banner signs. We want to be able to continue to allow them, but we want to be able to regulate it. And so the Planning and Zoning Commission has reviewed this over the past few months, and the suggested ordinance would allow for two types of banner signs, a thirty-day banner sign and an annual banner sign. If there's someone were to apply for an annual permit, it would mean that they would have a one-week period per month in order to fly a banner sign for a recurring event. And for the thirty-day banner sign, it would be primarily for grand openings and special, and businesses. But it would give us a timeframe and backing so that when we go to ask people to remove signs that have become tattered, that we would have some sort of precedent, some, some sort of backing in our ordinance.
Any questions of the council?
I'm all fart. Once again, we have very limited amount of personnel to monitor how long a banner's been up there. So I guess it'll probably be something to be taken care of once somebody complains about it, I guess. If anybody ever complains, if not, it may be up there for a solid year.
Yeah, it, it will be based on, as the code enforcement officer does note them, and, you know, unfortunately, we do rely a lot on, on citizen complaints in order to document those. But there are some that are up currently that we would be able to better regulate.
Okay.
And there's also, I forgot to mention, a provision that would exempt 501(c)(3) organizations from the permit fee.
It's, it's pretty standard from the cities that I've come from.
Yeah, it's, most of the language was borrowed from the City of Amarillo's banner sign provisions.
Does anyone in the audience have any questions or comments? Anything else from the council? If not, then I'll declare this public hearing closed.
Would be the favor of the council?
I make a motion that we consider a provision allowing and regulating the use of banner signs. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, item 6.5 on the agenda, again, it's a public hearing, this being on a proposed ordinance amendment concerning residential zone parking to regulate the parking of commercial vehicles in residentially zoned districts.
And this is again a matter that the Planning and Zoning Commission has been considering over the past few months. We had an issue in July of last year that went to the Zoning Board of Adjustment that concerned regulating commercial vehicles in a residential zone. And so the Planning and Zoning Commission was asked to clarify the use of commercial parking in residential areas. The proposed ordinance would restrict commercial vehicles to be, to allow for one commercial vehicle to be parked out of doors overnight in a residential zone, and it would define a commercial vehicle as a vehicle licensed as commercial or a vehicle that the Texas Department of Licensing has a, Texas Department of Licensing and Regulations number. We had originally looking, looked at the Texas Transportation Code. The Planning and Zoning Commission was concerned that it may not be as encompassing as they wanted, so we borrowed from the City of Corpus Christi's definition for a commercial vehicle. There's one aspect that we did, that the Planning and Zoning Commission voted to remove from that definition, which was that I, to count any vehicle with a permanently affixed logo as a commercial vehicle. This provision would also strike from Section 303, the allowance of parking vehicles off-site up to 300 feet, and so would require someone to park their vehicle on their property, to have their designated parking on the primary use property.
Any questions of council regarding this particular matter?
So let's make this real clear for everyone. So if someone has a company truck that they drive home every night, it's got a company truck logo on it, as long as it's there in their driveway, in and out, designated as a work truck, that's fine.
Yes, it would have to be a, like a vehicle that was large enough or would meet the, the qualifications to be commercially licensed.
Right.
And so that's why, the, one of the main reasons the commission wanted to remove the requirement for the permanently affixed logo was exactly for that reason. You know, there's many families that have multiple family members that work with a work truck that has the, their company logo on it, or an Avon logo on the sedan. We didn't want to, you know, restrict those.
Right, okay.
This would mainly be to require that if it is a commercially licensed vehicle, that they only have one out of doors. If they had an enclosure, they wanted to build a garage, then it would be, they would be able to park more, but this way, just to keep commercial vehicle, to maintain the residential zone intent of maintaining that residential feel.
Right, right.
Anyone in the audience have any questions or comments?
Kat, I have a question, actually, council. So when you're saying a commercial vehicle, large enough, what, define what large enough means.
Well, it would just, if they're licensed as a commercial vehicle. So depending on how they're licensed through the state.
So not, not an eighteen-wheeler or something like that?
Yeah, I mean, those would be licensed as commercial, but it doesn't have to be just those.
Well, yeah, but we also have a truck ordinance that prohibits heavy trucks on certain roads.
Correct, and that would just be separate. This would be for the parking on private property, onsite parking.
Okay.
Anyone else have anything?
Are wreckers parking here? It wouldn't be a parker truck there anymore?
Well, they could park one onsite on their property. If they want to park more and they want to provide for a garage to do so, then they could do that.
Anything else?
A wrecker is not considered a commercial vehicle?
It's a license through the state as.
Oh, it is commercial, okay. Okay, I thought you said it wasn't.
No, I'm sorry, it would.
So if you have a wrecking yard, you have to have only one wrecker, and if you have more, you have to have an enclosed building for the rest?
Yes, sir.
No, you're saying a wrecker yard. If it's a yard, it's not going to be in a residential area.
Correct, yeah.
We're talking about residential areas.
Wreckers are able to take one home.
Yeah.
So if it's at their shop, they can have as many as they can put in that designated area, but not at their home if it's in a residential area.
Correct.
Anyone else? If not, then this public hearing is closed.
What would be the pleasure of the council?
I'll make a motion, we approve the amendment to the residential zone parking to regulate parking of commercial vehicles in residential zoned districts.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item 6.7 is a public hearing on a proposed ordinance amendment regarding shared parking lot provisions to allow for shared parking in non-residential zones.
Sorry, y'all get to see me a lot this evening. This provision would allow for the sharing of a parking lot provided This provision would allow for the sharing of a parking lot provided that two businesses or non-residential area had shared access. Primarily, it would be intended for RCA District where we do not have a lot of parking, but it's also applicable to several of our general business and other commercially zoned area. One of the main reasons this came up was the opening of Fisherman's Cove. They share a parking lot area, and they are going to be improving the parking lot and expanding it, but it would help them if they were able to share the parking lot and, because they'll have a lot of business in the evening that won't conflict with the business in the day of the.
Bankhouse or whatever.
Yeah, and so in instances like that, the city would require that they enter into a legally binding agreement that would be filed in whichever county of our three counties they happen to fall into, and if there was any sort of sale of the property, they would have to reenter the agreement. It would allow, the proposed provision would allow for 25% reduction of the required parking if it meets the shared access.
I have a question, Cat.
Yes, ma'am.
Item 402, if I read it correctly, "City shall allow a 25% reduction in the required number of parking spaces for a premises served by a shared access and parking agreement." I understand that. And then it says, "In the event the agreement is terminated, each development must comply with the parking requirements enforced at the time of the termination." So you're saying it would go back to without that 25%?
Yes, ma'am, unless they were able to reenter into another agreement.
Into the 25%, okay. Just making sure.
Any other questions or comments by council? Anyone in the audience? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I have a question on this. Now, what if one of the businesses closed and it was vacant for a long extended period? How would that affect this?
If the ownership didn't change, then they could maintain that agreement. If the ownership changed, if the property was sold, then they would have to reenter into a new agreement, or they would have to expand their parking to make up for the 25% reduction.
Anyone in the audience have any questions or comments? Anything else from the council? Then this public hearing is closed.
Pleasure of the council?
Well, I'll make a motion, we approve the amendment for the shared parking lot provision.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Next is item 649, public hearing on the proposed ordinance amendment regarding single-family lots in manufactured home districts to allow for and regulate the plating of single-family lots within an MH district.
When we annexed the Sherwood Forest area last year, and we zoned a large portion of it MH, we did so with the intent of allowing for the continued use of most of the people who live there for the manufactured homes. What we didn't do was amend our ordinance to allow those people to replat it as a single-family lot if they wanted. Currently, our manufactured home district chapter only allows for regulations to replat it as a subdivision, as an RV subdivision, RV park, or a manufactured home subdivision. As a subdivision, they would have to have at least five acres; as an RV park, they would have to have at least two. And so, to allow the people who live there, if they wanted to replat in order to have one manufactured home as a single-family residence, these provisions would allow for that. It would implement the same regulations used in our R7B district, which would require at least 7,000 square feet, setbacks of 25 foot in the back and 25 foot in the front, and 10%, no more than 10, no less than 6, side yard feet setback. It doesn't have any minimum floor space requirements. Again, the R7B district doesn't have those, and so in order to allow for the manufactured homes, which can often be smaller, we voted on, or the planning commission voted on not including the minimum floor space requirements as well. They did advise a stipulation that would not permit RVs to be used on these newly-platted single-family lots. People who are currently living on single-family lots in RVs or in other groupings of RVs out there are grandfathered in, but going forward, it would not be allowed to replat for RV, for the use of single-family RVs.
Any questions or comments by council? Anyone in the audience have any questions or comments? Here comes old Daniel, I knew that's why you were here. Old Daniel.
My name is Daniel Jimenez, I live at 140 North Arch Street here in Aransas Pass. Maybe I misunderstood the purpose of this amendment. It's to allow mobile homes?
To allow manufactured homes.
Or allow houses?
And actually, I went back and looked. There was a little confusion on my part. Previously, when we were voting to amend the manufactured home subdivision, it was discussed to allow traditionally-built stick houses. It was never codified. At the time, the planning and zoning, and I believe the city council staff, Mr. Saldana was here, and he was recommending to allow a 10% allowance of traditionally-built homes if it was to be allowed in order to maintain the division as manufactured home district. However, it was never voted, I went back and checked, and it was never voted on. So at this point, it would not, it would still not be allowed. That would be something for the council and for the commission to consider going forward.
The reason why I asked, because I thought, I remember that that was discussed during the planning and zoning meeting, that it was specifically stated that houses would be allowed to be built in the, in a manufactured home subdivision, which sounded good at the start, but when I started thinking about it, it's actually not good because it has never been allowed. The houses have never been allowed to be built in a manufactured home subdivision or park. And the MH zoning designation is specifically designed for RVs and mobile homes. Now, this proposed amendment, the way it was presented before the planning and zoning, was going to allow people to subdivide their property and build houses, and then eliminate RVs, which is a major change, because RVs have always been allowed in manufactured home subdivisions since the beginning of our ordinances as far as zoning goes. So that's a major change. If you don't allow RVs in a subdivision, in a manufactured home subdivision, you relegate them to be in, having to pay rent, in an RV park, or having to buy property in the only areas that is, excuse me, an RV subdivision where the lots are $60,000 to $70,000 per 4,500 square foot lot. That's the price for a RV lot. When somebody already owns their property within a manufactured home subdivision, you're going to take that right away from them, even though the whole purpose of the MH district is to make a place for that particular type of building.
I think Cat said that if there's an RV in one of those places already that it's grandfathered in.
Well, I understand that.
So they can keep their RV there, but new ones can't come into the MH district.
I understand that, but you're limiting the use in the future. If you don't allow them to use that area and MH designated area, which has always allowed RVs, if you don't allow them to do that, then they will be relegated to either paying rent, which is, RV park is not considered a permanent residence. It's transient. It's transient-type residence. They'll be relegated to paying rent, or they will have to pay $60,000 to $70,000 for a Mount Hill 50-foot lot, when they already own acreage that allows.
They can put a manufactured home on it.
Yes, but some people like RVs. And it's not, it's not a regular, it's not a regular residential lot. I can understand you don't want, you don't want them anywhere else in the city, but that MH designation was specifically set up for that purpose. The other thing is that the R7B zoning district was all but eliminated in 2014 by the previous council. The R7B district is a, or was a mixed-use district, which allowed RVs, excuse me, allowed RVs, mobile homes, and commercially-built houses. And now that was completely unacceptable to the previous city manager, to the previous plan developer.
Director of Development Services.
Director of Development Services. That was totally unacceptable, and it was totally unacceptable to the, to the, excuse me, to the planning and zoning and the previous council. So they eliminated the R7B district. The only thing that was left was the building requirements. It was it. Last year, this council voted to change the name of the R7B district to simply a single-family district, and basically incorporate it into the R7A district. Now, if you allow this amendment, you're going to basically be allowing spot zoning within an established zoning district, because they're going to have different, different rules that apply to that particular area. So I don't recommend.
I'm not sure that I understand what he means by spot zoning.
Spot zoning is.
We're trying to eliminate that.
Correct. Spot zoning is actually where someone would rezone the property, and if it were, for example, if we were trying to put a, an A2 multifamily zone, like a one-acre lot in the middle of an R16 district as a multifamily dwelling zone, that would be spot zoning. You have to be sure that there is transitional space between your commercial, multifamily, and single-family. This technically wouldn't count as spot zoning, it's just an amendment to our current zoning regulations. And just to clarify, we didn't eliminate the R7B. The ordinance amendments that were done last year did remove manufactured homes in RVs as allowable uses in that district. It's still differentiated from the R7A by the fact that it doesn't have any minimum floor space requirements. But we still have a large portion of the town that's R7B.
Well, that's kind of what I was getting at, but I was actually referring to the original proposal, which was to allow houses, allow houses, excuse me, allow houses, okay, which was discussed before the planning and zoning. That's what they were discussing, planning and zoning. That would most definitely be, have allowed spot zoning. But the, but the issue of spot zoning is that the regulations that are being proposed in those particular areas that are to be allowed to subdivide, the building regulations are going to be different than in an MH district. In an MH district, you can subdivide your lots by 4,500 square feet in the, what's left of the R7B district, which was a mixed-use district. What's left is not a mixed-use district. The only thing that's left are the technicalities, the ones that, sorry, the.
Grandfathered?
The ones that you described. I forgot your name, I'm sorry.
Cat.
Cat, the ones that Cat described. That's the only thing that's left of the R7B district, because they did not want a mixed-use district. But the requirements are different. There are two separate requirements. One is requirements of one zoning district, and the other is requirements of an MH district. So it's two conflicting regulations.
So can you clarify that for us?
Yes, just to be clear, there are several points in our zoning ordinance that refer to other zoning chapters, just like this refers to the R7B regulations for a single-family lot. For example, if you look at our multifamily districts or duplex districts, they're going to refer back to the replating regulations that are in our other single-family lots. It's meant mainly for continuity. We just wanted that the intent was for single-family lots to have the same dimensions. We, there are single-family zones that are allowed for bigger lots in the R, or require bigger lots in the R16 district, but a fraction of our single-family lots are either R7A or R7B. And so the intent was, and our residences, the single-family residences that are allowed in general business follow those same parameters that are in R7A. Again, our intent with adopting the similar regulations to R7B was to accommodate manufactured homes. And it does change the intent original of the manufactured home district. The only area that this will be applicable to is the recently annexed portion. All other areas in the City of Aransas Pass that are zoned MH are established subdivisions or parks. And so those would be allowed as continued uses. If someone wanted to purchase property in the Sherwood Forest area to do a manufactured home and/or a park, then if they have the acreage to do so and the development resource to do so, they would still be allowed to do so. This just allows for people who want to do single-family home lots in the MH district to be able to replat their property to do so. I've just had a few owners out there that have wanted to put additional manufactured homes on their property in order to accommodate family members or to sell the property, and as it stands, if they don't have enough acreage, then they can't subdivide it at all. Or they would have to purchase enough acreage in order to establish an entire subdivision or an entire RV park. So right now, it is the only area that allows for the placement of RVs outside of an RV park, but the way that our ordinance is worded, going forward, if someone were to purchase it to put in RVs, they would have to follow the RV park ordinance anyway. And so this just kind of clarifies that. We're just trying to move away from allowing in, single-family lots to be developed just with one RV. We're intending to have more permanent structures and for the RVs to be in RV parks and RV subdivisions, to have the amenities that accommodate to that, to the RVs. So that's, that's the intent.
Members of the council have any further questions or comments?
Yeah, so what we're actually trying to do is get rid of an RV park, or the RVs going into that area in the trailer parks. That's actually what we're trying to accomplish.
Yeah, we're trying to make sure that the, going forward, when people come in with RVs, that they go either into an RV park or an RV subdivision.
Right.
But the ones that are currently there, they will still be allowed. You know, we've already, code enforcement and planning has already had to consider, and we've been considering them on a case-by-case basis, when someone has had a property where they have multiple RVs or mixed use, like they have manufactured homes and RVs on the same lot, and they were that way before it was annexed, they're allowed to continue that use. Right now, if someone were to come in and replat, they would not be able to do both RVs and manufactured homes on the same lot anyway, but this would just, again, allow for the single-family lots.
As I stated, the R7B does not allow manufactured homes at all anymore. It was voted out completely, even on a conditional use basis.
Yeah, but there's a difference between an RV and an actual trailer itself. So this place has been zoned for manufactured homes, which is trailer houses?
Yes, sir. The way that our ordinance defines, we have mobile homes, which we go by the HUD definition. They were built prior to 1978. The manufactured homes are built after that point, and they meet more stringent federal regulations. And so right now, we allow for, you know, if someone's wanting to replace a grandfathered-in mobile home, they could do so with a manufactured home that was less than seven years old.
Because I know there's a manufactured house built right across the street from my house.
Let me ask you, is there anyone else in the audience who has any questions or comments?
I don't completely understand.
Yes, ma'am, you want to come forward? Come forward, please.
Do we have any other places in the city that we have? Hello, my name is Feliciano Rodriguez. I have property.
Speak up just a minute.
I'm sorry, I have property on 416 Payne Avenue, and my mother is wanting to retire over here, and because I'm not using the property right now, I currently live in Houston, but I come down just about every other weekend because I also have my father here. My mom's wanting to move down from the Panhandle. I was wanting to move her there, not only to, you know, to help her out, but to also take care of the property and to make it presentable for the town as well. I mean, you know, that's the whole go there. And then I was told that we couldn't bring in a new mobile home or, you know, all different kinds of stuff. We have a small one there, but if a family's going to be there, it needs to be livable and something big enough, you know, for her to be able to have her own stuff. So when they brought this to my attention, I'm like, it wasn't like that before, so why are they doing it now? I mean, it's been like that since I was probably like seven years old.
So do you have a mobile home on that property now?
Yes, I do.
How old is it?
But it's a small one. It's been there for years.
Okay. How long is it? Do you know?
No, I don't know.
The property is 100 by 300.
The property is 100 by 300. Do you know the age and the length of the mobile home that's present?
Yes, it's been there six years.
Oh, okay, that's not very long. Is it thirty foot? I didn't know, that, it, so is that an RV?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, it's an RV.
Cause-
Okay.
Cause my dad had a trailer house there before, um, we took over it. Um, he had a fire in his mobile home.
Okay.
So then I got him out of there and then we put a, uh, we cleaned it up and everything. And, um, we moved him out. But it has the, um, city water, it has, um, the grandfathered-in, um, what is it?
Subject.
Subject tank.
Well, let, let, it, does the proposed ordinance we're talking about now have anything to do with this?
Well- It would not restrict-
No.
You could replace the current RV on the property with the, with the newer RV. You just couldn't remove it, leave the property vacant and then replace it later.
Correct, correct, okay.
Well, they would be grandfathered in.
Your grandpa.
Right, they would be grandfathered in, they would be able to-
So long as there's already something there.
Yeah, we just have to have something showing, even just a digital photograph showing that it was there before the annexation. And it, it would, that would be enough to-
When did this kick in, anyway?
It was annexed in January twenty sixteen.
Okay. Cause I wasn't, I didn't know anything about it, so.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that has anything to do with the proposed ordinance? Go ahead, Jane.
Uh, the other issue is that, that, uh, uh, any proposed amendment to our zoning is supposed to, the people that it's gonna affect, it's suppo- they're supposed to receive written notice. And no one received written notice. The only way I found out is because it came out in the newspaper.
Okay, Cat?
And this is a major amendment.
Cat's gonna have to answer that for us, so.
I actually, uh, with, uh, Mr. Jimenez asked me about that on Friday, I looked it up. The, the differences, that's a requirement if you're a general law city. If you are a, uh, general law city-
It's our ordinance.
Yep. Well, I will have to look at this a bit more. The, uh, this is the, the city ordinance on it. When I was initially brought on and trained by Mr. Saldana, the way that it was explained to me was that we do notices for, uh, the mailed notices within a two-hundred-foot buffer if it's affecting specific property. But for ordinance and text amendments, that the requirement, as, and we've been going off of the local government code, as for a home rule city, is simply that it be, a publication be put in the city's designated newspaper fifteen days before the public hearing. And so I will look more into section one.
That's, that's our ordinance required written notice.
I think he's correct, Cat.
Okay, I will look into that.
You can keep that.
Okay.
Well, I would suggest that the council, I'm, I'm a close to public hearing, and I would suggest that the council table this-
I agree.
Until the next meeting, and Cat can research this and come back and talk with you about it.
All right.
So the public hearing's closed.
All right.
The favor of the council?
Well, table this. Table this.
Do we have to make a motion on that?
Do we have to make a motion on that?
Yes.
Make a motion to table this?
Yes.
That makes council meeting.
I second.
I'm in favor.
Aye.
All right, next public hearing is in regard to, uh, proposed ordinance amendment concerning tree preservation provisions to govern the protection of trees and vegetation.
All right, this ordinance amendment was brought up in response to citizens' concerns regarding historic oaks. Um, it would require that on any undeveloped or redeveloped property, that the developers submit a site plan showing any proposed, uh, showing any historic trees. That would be any trees that were more than six inches in diameter at four feet from the ground. Um, they would have to show that any trees that didn't meet the exceptions, which were to be, if it's directly within the footprint of the building, uh, in line of any of the utility easements, if it was a danger, if it was sick. If it didn't meet any of those specifications, then they would have to show it, that, uh, they would have to apply for a tree removal permit. And they would either have to replace the tree, or they would have to make a, uh, pay a fee into a tree preservation fund. And, uh, the planning and zoning did consider this, they did vote against it. They found it to be too restrictive for, uh, potential developers. Um, I, uh, know that the, this is, that the cities of Ingleside and Rockport, um, you know, our nearest neighbors, have similar, uh, provisions already in place. Um, uh, this is our response to citizen concerns, but, uh, the, again, the Planning and Zoning Commission felt that it could be a, a discouragement to development of some of our lots that have a lot of oak trees.
Any questions or comments by the council?
So the planning and zoning said, is going against it?
Correct.
Is that what you said?
They don't recommend it.
They recommended it.
It's because this particular ordinance is very restrictive to new development.
Extremely so.
Extremely so. So, we send it back to get re-verbaged?
Yes, with the-
Correct?
Yeah, with, with any recommendations.
Okay.
Does anyone in the audience have any questions or comments concerning this proposed ordinance? Yes, ma'am? Nope?
Okay. I do have some questions.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I'm, I'm Jessica, I'm a resident here in Francis.
Your last name?
Jessica Hernandez.
Hernandez, okay.
And, um, I do have some questions because I'm the person that brought up why these trees were cut down initially on, on Harrison Boulevard. And that brought concerns over the heritage oak trees here in the community. And looking at the overall environmental impact of it all, with the understanding how trees can help, uh, storm, um, drainage, and then also just looking at the ecosystem. Okay, I'm babbling, sorry. Um, my question is, what has come of the shared-use path, uh, route? Has that already been decided? So the trees that were possibly involved with the shared-use route, that's a tax dot project, that's supposed to go from the high school to the library, there were some trees that were subject to be cut possibly within that route as well. That was why originally the whole idea of this tree ordinance was asked to be looked at, so that the community can look at the value of the trees and, and so that we could get more involvement of the community, more people to-
Well, just so you know, just so the council knows, uh, in that sidewalk project-
Right.
They have tried wherever they could to leave the trees in, including moving the sidewalk around, uh, to allow to keep some of the existing trees as much as they could without putting the sidewalk too close to the road.
Right, the Palm, Palm Road, I guess it's a drive, there's an easement behind it that could be used. Um, I do know that this is a, this isn't a hike and bike trail, it's a shared use, so the specs are different. Rather than a six-foot, uh, wide trail, it's ten feet wide, which I believe that has to do with ADA. Um, yeah, so-
And just to clarify, on the project, they were, which is narrowed down, I think there's five trees, and I believe there's small palm trees that they're gonna have to remove. The other ones are staying in place. They were able to-
I looked at TaxDOT's, uh, website this, this morning, just to kinda get an idea if it showed the route and it wasn't there, so that was one of the questions I had.
Yeah, there's, there's five that they're gonna have to remove, uh, and there were smaller palm trees, uh, they saved, I think, the majority of all the oaks. They were able to move the sidewalks around, and they did narrow down in some sections just to avoid taking out the trees.
And also, I was curious, how was, how would this, um, uh, tree ordinance fit in with the existing landscaping, uh, ordinance? It is already there, that kinda has a pretty in-depth, uh, diagram and, and information list of trees and shrubs and grasses, like for, it gives a rating of the different, um, applications of, basically, I guess, when people are developing an area, it encourages planting. So it has, it lists different, um, values. And so like, a tree, other than a palm, is worth twenty points. A palm tree is only worth one, shrubs are worth two.
If you'll look, it's based on, uh, they get one point per one inch of height, up to twenty points, so you can get, uh, you tend to get more plant, more points for the larger trees.
So looking at the values of the trees, ex- definitely, um-
Yeah, the, the way that the, uh, proposed amendments would fit in with the landscaping, primarily, uh, the, we, we always try to encourage people to keep the trees in one way, that the current landscaping ordinance does do that, is by granting pretty much the maximum, uh, points you can get for a single plant for the larger trees. I believe you can get to thirty points for a tree that's an oak, like a, not a palm, uh, depending on the height. And, uh, it, uh, so, the main difference is that the proposed amendment will require that before any dirt is moved, before any development is done, they would have to do a, a com- have someone go out and do a comprehensive site plan that would notate the locations of all of the trees that are above six inches in caliper, four feet from the ground.
Mm-hmm.
And so the, the landscaping ordinance, as it stands, they only have to submit the proposed finished landscape.
Because there is no, um, ordinance currently that has them keep certain diameters of trees.
Correct, they don't have to, we encourage it, but they don't have to.
Okay. Um, so yes, Rockport has a tree committee, that might be something that I think that could be considered, rather than it just being put on, on only, um, the zoning, and that way the committee can consist of people from the community that would have more of a unbiased, uh, perspective on it. Those are a few thoughts. And even though those trees were moved on Harrison Boulevard, in discussion with, uh, um, Mr. Benavides, it is under my, from what I understood, that that project could still be addressed in those, the Bermuda grass that's, that's designated to go in there still could be replaced with, with wildflowers, instead of taking those wildflowers out. And maybe we can't necessarily put oak trees back in, but the oak trees from Goodnight Street all the way down to Commercial Street, still on Harrison, those can be protected and not subject to the same, um, demise of the, uh, oak trees that are already removed from Harrison. And also protect the trees downtown by HEB, by, uh, the Rialto. And, and really encourage that area to get, I mean, people love to sit in shade. They're gonna have the businesses downtown have the shade available for it. One thing I did notice once those trees were removed, um, I did notice more police officers always parked over on, at the end of Harrison, they do that quite a bit in Goodnight Street. But, uh, some of those are, uh, those eighteen-wheelers have been coming through there a lot faster. And I walk through there all the time with my dog, and I notice it, so. Just something to keep in mind.
Okay.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else have anything?
I agree with the planning and zoning, uh, that this is overly restrictive ordinance, especially since they were, the ordinance was, uh, recommending that anything over six inches should be, uh, considered protected. Now, the, uh, the interesting thing about what's being proposed, to my knowledge, would not affect the city at all, as far as the regulations, it would only affect the property owners. The issue was brought forward because the city cut down a tree on city property. And this, this ordinance, I don't think would affect the city at all. They're not subject to those ordinances.
It would, it doesn't exempt the city, we would still have to go through the same, uh, process if we were going to be doing any kind of development. Uh, we would still have to have the site plan and, and the proposed, uh, removal would have to be reviewed. So it's not, it, the city wouldn't be exempt. Public property would not be exempt. The only exemptions are if the tree is sick, too sick to, uh-
Survive.
-continue. If it's a danger, then, uh, staff can give exemptions. Uh, I think that it's, uh, Director of Development Services that would be able to give an exemption based on if it's in a, uh, a danger or a threat, but other than that, there's, there's no, uh, exemption based on the property ownership.
The other issue was that even the inspection department got up and spoke on this, is that, so they would be no, almost impossible to enforce. Try to keep it from, people from, uh, or penalizing people who are cutting down anything smaller than, than the six inches. And the city of Rockport does have an ordinance, and it is overly restrictive. If you're a developer over there, it can cost you hundreds of thousands of dollars if you have tens, hundred trees, oak trees, especially oak trees, on your property. It's extremely restrictive. Now, oak trees are not an endangered species that I know of, because we have hundreds of thousands of oak trees in Aransas Pass, in the county, in Rockport. This is, it's, it's not, it's not a necessary ordinance. So I, I, uh, support their decision. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Denny. Anyone else? Anything else from the council? If not, then I declare this public hearing closed.
What would be the pleasure of the council?
I'll make a motion, we send this back to the draw board and get a little more clarification and open it up a little bit, it's pretty restrictive.
Well, you're denying?
Yeah, denying.
Denying.
Yeah, okay, I made a motion that we deny the tree ordinance and send it back to PNC.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
That's all the public hearings, Mary.
My turn. I only have one item. Uh, what you have before you here is the awarding of the RP for Highland Storm, as y'all requested, we went out for bids again. We did receive an additional bid, um, unfortunately, it came out even higher. At this point, we have two bids to choose from, uh, with J.J. Fox Construction being the, the lowest bidder. Staff recommends approving, uh, we did find another failure this past week on Friday that's occurring on that side, and it's just a result of that pipe failing, and it's just a matter of time before the rest of it continues. So we definitely take it that, replace it before school starts, and we have school buses traveling through there.
What was the reason why they went up thirty thousand?
The cost of a pipe, um, they got with, we had the manufacturer of the pipe, uh, come in during the pre-bid and give specifications and all that stuff, and that's when they got more concrete numbers on how, what it would cost.
Is J.J. Fox Construction here?
No. No.
I, I feel like I need to say something, since I was the one that wanted this to go back and be tabled and rebid. I don't know anything about his quality of work. It, it, nothing to say against J.J. Fox Construction, Inc. My whole reservation with the bid process before last meeting was because there was only one bid, um, received from the city. So, in sending it back, we had multiple companies that wanted to bid on this project, and after seeing the proposal, there was not enough information for them to bid on the project. And they absolutely refused to bid on a project, this project, because there was not enough information, uh, the specs were not clear, uh, there was too much liability on them. So, my question at this point is, how does J.J. Fox have all of the information that the other companies that wanted to bid did not?
That was given out at the pre-bid meeting. Uh, when we met here, that was discussed, we went out to the project site, walked it, and went over all the information. Um, with this project, there's only one opening in that whole length of pipe. Uh, we went out there with IT and manu- you know, made our own little camera to get in there and try to get some visual, because there's no openings throughout that whole project, so you really can't tell what's under that pipe. You just know that there's failures because the curb is falling in, and we've seen the holes through the sides where it's, it's caving in. Our plans are from nineteen eighty-three, and they're outdated. Um, all it shows is a sixty-four-inch pipe there. We did find additional, uh, cross connections that come in from the inlets, uh, but like I said, there's no openings that you can go in there and really see what, what there is. So all that information, we had the manufacturer of the pipe here for the pre-bid, um, and we sent out an addendum with, with that information. Um, and he was the only person that showed up for the pre-bid.
And then again, the pre-bid is, oh, for the pre-bid, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay. Oh. I, I just know in speaking to the contractors and owners of the other companies, that they were reluctant to bid on this project because there was not enough information in the specific proposal that was set, that was sent out to them. So, here- So here we are, and now J.J. Fox has raised it another $30,000, so if we would have awarded it three, several weeks ago, obviously, he would have had to come back to us and ask us for more money. So there you go. So my question is, on that pre-bid, are all the ones invited to that?
Yes.
All the companies that they chose not to come?
Yeah.
They chose not to come, because these companies do not work off of bids that are not sufficient for their information to begin with. But isn't the pre-bid meeting for them to come and get more information? If they've got questions? That's just my, I'm just asking.
Yeah, and the other company, Austin Engineering, Austin, they couldn't make it, but they called in, and they asked the questions, and we have all the travel emails where they were asking, every time they would have different questions, they would email us, and we'll send them the information.
So my request from this point forward would, to be that we have, I know that we've said in the past that engineered specs and plans are extremely expensive, but I still feel like we need better information to the contractors that want to bid.
Yeah, because it is kind of hard to bid a job on something you can't see, and it is kind of hard to bid a job just by, you know, you actually have to have a set of plans to where you can actually look and have all your specs to everything that you're gonna bid on.
Yeah, and the issue with this one too is, we're at a point where it's more of an emergency repair, and going through the whole process of the specs and design, that would have prolonged another five, six months to get all that done. And, you know, like I said, with school starting, you've seen the failures going on out there, and my fear is that a bus is gonna end up causing that to cave in while they're driving on it with kids, and we don't want that to happen.
And you're gonna have engineering fees.
What?
And you're gonna have engineering fees to do all that.
Yeah, I was just curious if the engineering fees were included in this bid?
They weren't. When the capital outlay projects from last year were improved, there was no engineering fees included in this, and that's another drawback we had, that there was no money allocated for that.
So are you saying that J.J. Fox has to get his own engineering?
No, we had, just the materials. The cost that was proposed was for the material of the project, to get it replaced, the contractor work, but not the engineering for it, because it was gonna be a replace.
But I understand it, but is there gonna be any engineering fees on top of this?
No. This is all...
That's what I mean, is they...
All-inclusive.
It's all-inclusive, yeah.
All right.
Well, I make a motion that we approve the bid for J.J. Fox Construction, Inc., for $673,150.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. For the next item, we have Amanda Torres here to present for us.
Hello, mayor and council. So this item before you is in regards to the Aransas County Multi-Jurisdictional Flood Plan Management Plan. We've been working on that for the past year, so it's finally completed, and now it's being presented to your entity for adoption. So for the past year, Aransas Pass, Rockport, Fulton, and Aransas County have all joined forces to review the hazardous flooding in our area, and think of different actions in which we can mitigate it. So that is available on the city of Rockport's website, because it is a huge file and takes up two different volumes. So that link was provided in your council packet, I believe. So this item is here for adoption, or does anyone have any questions in regards to the plan that I'd be happy to answer?
Can I make a motion? Did you have a question?
Nope.
Okay. Make a motion that we adopt the Aransas County Multi-Jurisdictional Flood Plan Management Plan.
Second. All in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda.
Mayor, council, I'm back again, thank you. And I think I'm back on track, being on time with my updates. This report is from June 2017. You'll see that the numbers are pretty well consistent. I don't want to itemize everything down for you, they will publish online, and you can see the details there later, anybody in the public wants to. Some of the highlights from Patrol Division, Officer Chris Colunga, he leads our Explorers program, and I wanted to share this because during Shrimperee, he had the Explorers out there working, he donated his time completely, because he was not able to work Shrimperee, so the entire weekend he worked basically for free, contributing to directing the Explorers. We had 29 cases in patrol that were filed for prosecution. CID, interesting case here, detectives obtained a DNA match on a 2013 case where an undocumented immigrant struck an elderly female's vehicle. She sustained serious injuries and ended up losing her job, so we were able to get a hit off of DNA from that crash to identify that subject. Detectives are still putting out bait, we put out bait pretty regularly, and we had a couple arrests this last month. They have slimmed a little, because the word's gotten around, and it's always fun to hear when bad guys are talking amongst other bad guys, and it gets back to us that, if you're gonna go steal this or that, you're gonna probably want to stay out of Aransas Pass. We like hearing that. We had detectives working some drug, detailed drug information. We get beat up a lot, because people feel like drugs are being sold, delivered, whatever, we're making low-level arrests, and we're never working on the targets. We are, it's just very difficult, our hands are pretty much tied, we have to develop a lot of evidence or other ways into them. But we did some targeted enforcement this last month, and it's continued into this month, using our guys from the DEA that we have assigned over there, they've been coming into town and working. So surprise, surprise, we're getting some good busts. Eloy Davila was one, starting in June, where they targeted him on a traffic stop, and got some good dope recovered. I had this here too, to talk about the sex offender ordinance that council previously had enacted. I was gonna brag that the last offender we had registered to come into town as a new offender in town was December of 2016. Well, we had an offender move into town just days ago, so, but this offender is, that just moved into town, was also a resident, and we've just seen a huge decline in offenders choosing our area, whereas before, we were the elite area to come as an offender. You could register on paper, and you could just do and live wherever you wanted, everybody just thought you lived in AP. Training remains pretty much the same, there's some details there if anybody wants to look at that. Shrimperee, I'll jump down to that report. Shrimperee, we had a total of 22 events during Shrimperee, three arrests, which I believe is the most I've had since I've been chief here, which in my opinion's awesome.
That's amazing.
Yeah. We've had four lost children, four EMS events, and basically, this was a good year, and we're looking forward to Shrimperee 2018.
Now we go to citizen comments, that is intended for the matters that are not scheduled on the agenda. Please limit presentation to three minutes. A recording is made of the meeting, therefore, speak, please speak into the microphone located at the podium and state your name and address.
Wait a minute, ain't start talking yet. My name's Donald Brother, 902 South Right. In case y'all don't know, J.J. Fox does good drain work, he did D.B. But my request is, Fernando, is when are y'all gonna fix Avenue A?
That's all, we're waiting, we're gonna try to do it this weekend, we've got some alerts on rain, but it's in the schedule already, we coordinated with the asphalt company, because we're gonna overlay that entire area instead of patching it.
Thank you very much.
I think, mayor, you gotta let the time run out now before...
Before the next room can come up.
Time out.
Thank you, mayor, and council. I'll make it quick. I live on Avenue A, 913 South Avenue A. My name's Bill Stevens. I have several concerns there with what's going on with the construction by Hogan Farms Houses. They've dug a ditch along the road in the county or city right of way. My first question is, annexed fully complete?
Avenue A?
Yes.
The west side?
Yes.
Is county. The east side is city.
I know, but it was supposed to be annexed. My question is, has it been annexed, or is that bid?
Which portion of Avenue A?
Where the Hogan homes are.
Where Hogan homes are supposed to be.
My apologies, that has been...
That has been.
Okay. Next question is, have they paid for the sewer that has been run, because they have made connection and run into their property?
I would have to check with the utility department to see if they paid them out.
They haven't yet, because we haven't tested the sewer. They're laying all the water in sewer right now for the subdivision, but they can't connect into our system until we test it.
Looks like to me they've already done the connection and covered the pipe all the way back in there for about 100 yards.
Because they were gonna tie everything into their own lift station, and then do a forcement from there into the manhole down on Avenue A.
Okay, next question. That ditch they've just started and finished just about today there, it's on the city right of way, okay? They were not supposed to have had any discharge of water off of their property into other areas. This ditch runs all the way down across Highland into Augusta Johnson Road. My question is, that right of way, do they have a permit to do that on that right of way, or is the city doing it?
That's, I think, is where they're laying out the water lines and utilities that they're gonna use there, it's not gonna be a ditch.
It's a ditch right now, and it looks like it's gonna be a ditch.
No, from my understanding, so that's where all the utilities are gonna go. If they don't fill it back in the way it's supposed to, then we'll end up meeting with them, because...
Okay, well, they'll pull the dirt back from their property, they've taken the city dirt and put it back on their property.
Yeah, there doesn't supposed to be a ditch there. We'll look into it, but I know from my understanding right now, they're putting all the utilities in.
Yeah, because with that ditch there, that's restricting anybody parking there, or even kids or people walking, like from school back and forth. It's gonna force them out closer to the road, because there are kids that do walk there.
We'll follow up with them, make sure that it's just for the utility purposes, they cover it back up.
And make sure that they do pay their portion of that sewer line and anything else they owe the city, because first developers, a lot of times, go under, and you're left holding the bag.
They've been around a long time, though.
It doesn't matter. I've seen some of the biggest go under, and it could happen. Thank you.
Anybody else?
My name's Raymond Adami, 416 Payne Avenue, where we're at, that dead end, it floods there, and I've asked several times about the city, and they tell me to go ask Sam Pat, and then about the cleaning the drains, because it's always, there's no drain, it's always clogged up there. And all the people are complaining, but nobody's come up here yet. But right there in front of my property, it's all full.
What was your address again?
The 416 Payne, the drains are all clogged up on all those lines right there.
I'll have someone get out there and take a look at it, and shed it out.
Thanks, sir.
Anybody else?
I'll make a motion that we adjourn this meeting.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.